Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Joe Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to ask us all to bow our heads for a moment of silence, recognizing the murder of Honore Fleming, one of our towns members and a longtime important administrator at Castleton State College. Thank you.
If it gets too hot in here, we can pop those windows open, too.
First item is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, additions, corrections? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Do we know if Mary Lee or Bob's there?
They're not on yet. They were going to try to be on, but they're not on yet.
Okay. Next item is the minutes of September 25th. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of September 25th, 2023, as presented.
Is there a second?
I would second that.
Discussion, corrections, additions? Joe?
In the third paragraph from the bottom of the first page, the paragraph that begins, Mr. Menes stated he was present again, et cetera. In the second line, I would suggest that we delete the phrase "being made," so that the sentence reads, "Jay Lemey stated the police chief is working on changes to the noise ordinance." On the second page, in the first full paragraph that starts, "T. Kearns asked for an update on whether Meadowee-Pulteney," et cetera. I think for the sake of those who don't know what that reference means, we should spell it out. It's Meadowee hyphen Pulteney Natural Resources Conservation District. And that's all I had in a way of suggested changes.
Just one more. Under managers' report, second paragraph, last line where Mr. Mark made the motion to use our funds, et cetera. I seconded that, and it's not in the minutes.
And, Mr. Chairman, I left one item off my recommended suggested changes. That's on the last page, page four. One, two, three. Fourth paragraph starts, "Jay Mark asked about the plaque," and the second line includes the word "providence." That should be "provenance," P-R-O-V-E-N-A-N-C-E. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? If not, all those in favor of approving the minutes with the corrections indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Citizens' comments and/or concerns, items not on the agenda. You're up.
I wrote you a letter.
Steve Decken.
My name is Steve Decken. I live at 156 Conley Road in Castleton. Retired police detective. Been retired now about 40 months. I haven't seen some of you in 40 months. Just farming now. But I wrote you a letter to bring your attention to a situation that exists every spring up on Belgo Road. Conley Road is my road that I live on, and that's a wonderful road. It hardly ever has any problems, and it's private. But Belgo Road goes through this thaw, freeze-thaw cycle, and it has some heaving issues, serious heaving issues. And there's also a sinkhole up there. I think there must be, right at the intersection of Grand Fosnab Road and Belgo Road, every other year or so, somebody comes and dumps a load of gravel there and fills the hole back in. But there's a depression there. And I don't know if you guys are aware of that. The dirt's going somewhere, but it's not really the problem that I wrote the letter on. But I thought it was a good idea to mention it right now, just to bring it to your attention. The road was destroyed two years ago. Mike had a lot of local contractors come in here and do a great deal of work on the ditching culvert system that the road has now. That's in very good condition. The problem is, is that the road's covered by trees. And in the winter, it doesn't get much sun in certain spots up there, and when the heave comes, it's almost impassable. This past winter, I think the road department put in 18 large dump trucks of fill consisting of four-inch, four-inch to six-inch stone. And they were trying to fill the mud pit in by backing these trucks up Belgo Road from the East Hubbardton Road, dropping the stone and driving along the stone for traction, not to bury the truck in the mud. The ruts get to be 12, 15, maybe even deeper. And for people that don't have a full-size, you know, or a serious four-wheel-drive vehicle, they're not going anywhere for four to six weeks. Someone that uses a eight-passenger car and is going through that mud with a six-inch stone, and they're sustaining damages to the vehicles and breaking the calving on the front, the bottom of the bumpers of these newer cars, it doesn't take much to snap that stuff. And there's $1,500 to $2,000 worth of damage. I wrote the letter. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to clear anything you might be in question of.
Any questions for Steve?
You mentioned, Steve, the oil and chip solution. Is that something you have heard about or have direct experience with?
I have personal knowledge of it. When I worked for Verizon, Bell Atlantic, New Jersey Bell, I was an engineer for them for 13 years. I was trained as a mechanical engineer somewhat. I don't hold a degree in it, but I took courses for over six months at Newark College of Engineering, which was, which is now NJIT. So in doing my job for 13 years, I had to design placement of cable and conduit and manholes and things like that. And it's a standard practice to use an oil and chip on rural road. And the state of New Jersey's requirement, if you cut the shoulder of their road, they usually have something at least about eight foot wide. And if you cut to bury a cable or a cable and conduit, you would have to replace that in kind or better. And normally, it wasn't unusual to do piles of oil and chip after burying a cable, okay? So I know it holds up. It holds up to monstrous traffic. The premise that I go by with solving this problem up here is we need a cap on Belgo Road, some type of cap to keep the water and the snow from permeating the road surface and then eventually into the base. If you could eliminate that by using an oil and chip solution, you would force the water, the moisture, to the side because it would not penetrate the oil. And it would go to the gutters or ditches and utilize the culvert system, the ditch and culvert system. But the last two years, the freeze-thaw pattern up there, the cycle, has been unbelievable. You're trying to get home, you're trying to drive through this stuff that's very muddy, very deep, very rutted. At times, you can't catch your car to stay straight in four-wheel drive. You're just sliding through the mud to get through it. And my old boss used to say, "Don't bring me a problem unless you bring me a solution." So I thought, I'm not asking for something to be done right now. But I know there's a lot of money around, infrastructure money. I see that some of the roads here, Corey, Carter, Mary Lane, have been paved. I'm not looking for paving. That's FABC, that's Fine Aggregate by Two Minutes Concrete. And I'm not asking for anything like that. But once you put this down, you're going to have a very solid base to eliminate the moisture getting into Belgo Road. Once you do that, I doubt whether the heaves will ever be a problem after that. I cited three or four companies that do that in Rutland, Pike. It's in the letter. I know there's about 30 families up there. And we've grown over the last 23 years that I've lived here. And I see a lot of their kids now. They're driving cars, so two cars turned into five, you know? The road gets more use than you think. And I'd like to see, I'd like to see some type of solution, possibly for next summer. Have I answered your questions?
I think you have, Steve.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions for Steve? Thank you very much, Steve.
You're welcome.
Anyone else who wishes to address the board? Items not on the agenda?
I think the chief's out there.
You got somebody?
Chief.
Oh, yeah.
You're not on the agenda, so you're fallen with that category.
Oh, yeah. So I just want to kind of give you an update of what's going on. Obviously, the state just left the building over there, so I apologize for this. I was dissipating maybe half hour early, but, you know, when things are going, I don't like to interrupt what they're doing. They will be over there tomorrow, but hopefully not all, not until this late tomorrow. So I don't know if you saw the pressers, if you saw the news. So we did do a media news outlet out here. And so today, they had the SAR, the S.A.R. search and rescue team out checking the trails, checking the ground, see what was, if they missed anything. I don't know if they found anything and didn't hear anything. There was some other stuff going on. They're working on other investigative tools to obtain information, like warrants and NTOs and stuff like that for other stuff. But there's no suspect. So they haven't got anybody actually singled out. They don't know the motive. As I told the news, I don't, you know, people say, "Well, was it random? Was it targeted?" We don't know. We really don't know. So I know I talked to, I went over there to the university today. I was there about 1:30, 1:00 to 1:30. Talked with a couple of staff there, Ms. Beckworth, kind of told her where we were at with that, or they were at with that. She's going to open up tomorrow, district, the other schools are going to open up. You know, my biggest thing is, as I told them, as I told the news to the community, is really being situationally aware. Yeah, we know there's somebody out there, but we don't know where. I don't want people to have a grip of fear, but I also want, I want them to be aware and be situation aware around you, you know? Lock your doors, lock your cars, make sure your cameras are working, if you have them. If you go in the woods, go in pairs, people, even though they had the rail trail pretty much closed off today, but there were some people that were trying to get, you know, walk and do their thing there. So it's really coming down to, they've taken over 200 tips, you know, trying to vet everything out, get as much information as they can. And that's kind of it.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay. Any questions? No?
Any questions?
What's an NTO?
Non-testimulating order? That's just getting some more evidence in a different way.
Thank you, Chief. Anyone else who wishes to address the board? Items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to Tim Bux, OCCUD update. Is Tim on Zoom there?
Right here.
Not on Zoom. There's Tim.
Pretty close, actually.
Zooming in person.
So, yeah, I wanted to give an update on OCCUD, Outer Community Communication Unit District. We are looking to bring fiber optic communications to unserved and underserved people in Rutland County. And so I submitted to Mike our annual, our annual report as well as a proposed budget for 2024. And also wanted to announce that we have received the grant for Act 71, in which we've got funding from VCBB to build out all the underserved and unserved people in Rutland County, including Castleton. So there are, I believe, 4135 addresses now that will be served. The grant is for a little over $9 million. None of it from taxpayer money. This is all primarily coming from the infrastructure bill from the U.S. government. And the construction will begin at the early 2024 and be completed in 2025. We are, we're partnering with Consolidated. It's a public-private partnership we're following along with what Southern Vermont Communication Unit District did in Lemoyle as well. So I think, you know, it was a good decision to do this and go with the public-private partnership. And so essentially, there's no money required from any of the communities in our CUD. And we will be one of the first five online in the state of Vermont. Any questions? Comments?
Board have any questions? Joe?
I'll defer to Vice Chairman.
Is this a last mile type thing? Is that what you're?
So this is, no, this is actually doing the fiber routes to hook people up and then hook them up if they want to. They have to sign up to get hooked up. Now, there's a lot of different deals. It's on Consolidated's website, what they offer. But essentially, they're doing, they're going up Route 30, they're going over Floe Bridge and down Johnson Spooner Road. So we're going to get it if we want it. They are going up North Road, they're going up, I forget the road that goes up to Hubbardton, they're going all the way up there. They're going up the road that goes to the State Park and then up Moscow Road. But basically, all the unserved, there's a map of it. It's in the plan I sent to you. If there's more details needed, they're available. But the properties and the ones that were unserved or underserved were part of a map that was very contentious and it took a long, you know, many iterations. But we went through it and eliminated everything that was not, you know, a real, a real need. And I think we should be in good shape.
Thank you. Any other questions? Oh, Joe, yes.
Yeah. Tim, there was, there's some controversy that's been written about in the press about some of the federal regulations that require that even such facilities as hunting camps have to be served. Is that going to affect your project at all?
You know, so they were not, as far as I know, hunting camps and that were excluded from the VCBB map. I mean, we went out and we actually did physical. We looked at things like that. And, you know, we had a lot of different things here. We have a couple islands where, you know, that were having addresses and stuff. But as far as I know, it was not for hunting camps. It was primarily if they had electricity was one of the, you know, running electricity was one of the filters that we used.
Anything else? Thank you, Tim.
Yep. Congratulations.
Thanks, Tim.
Thanks.
Moving on to recreation update. Bo, are you there?
Can you hear me? You okay?
Yes.
Oh, you're singing it. Okay, good, good. Well, all this is actually my last report that I'll be giving retrospectively now in the month of September. And it's a pretty regular month. That didn't add any new programs to them except we hadn't seen in previous months. So I'll just go through all of our categories real quick. In adult rec, we did see a bit of an uptick from August through the past because I think we're probably just sneaking in vacations and stuff, but it was a little quieter in August. Came back up a little bit in September. We had a really great, I think, successful program from the community.
Is this you? Come back in. Are you there, Bo?
Yes. I'm sorry about that. I don't know what happened. It got dropped, but you can hear me? Or can you hear me?
Yes. It's lagging a little bit.
Sorry about that. All right. Let me know if I get too choppy and you can't understand me, but I'll keep going. We had a really great community partner come in, and they, they had an indoor walking-esque program. It was indoor walking, similar to that, to a program we had before, but they had more of a class component and a community element to it. They had about 10 to 12 folks attend each time, and it was well-attended throughout. But we had them come in on, well, I'll go into that later. For rec itself, we had, we continued on with pickleball. We continued with five sessions a week, and we had 164 participants come in. We'd also have one in-room rental that was yoga, similar to the previous months. And we're looking to continue that in October as well. So all in, we had 164 folks come in to participate in rec programs, as well as one facility rental and one community partner program. As far as rec is concerned, we just had, we've been going on with youth soccer. We've got 39 registrants between kindergarten through fourth, and they're going through the season right now. They've got two practices a week and a game usually, except for the day through second, which is just instructional, but they practice twice a week as well. And we're going to be doing that season out at the end of October. But, so we're still in the throes of it. Going down.
Bo dropped off again. And Bo's back.
I apologize for that again. I'm almost done here. So as far as the community support events go, I guess, I guess what I was talking about this before, but we had the community senior center come in with the walking program, Walk With Ease, which was cosponsored by them and the Yartheritis Foundation. We had them come in three times a week, Monday, Wednesday, Friday. They were always really bopping days at the rec center, bopping during days of the week. And also had yoga happening on Wednesdays and Fridays. So Wednesdays and Fridays were particularly active in September. I myself, I haven't re-committed some of my commitments to some community organizations that have started just recently meeting again, like CSO and such, just because I'm on my way out. So I'm focusing on doing a lot of documentation for the next person and making sure that I'm closing out with all my, all the, all, you know, closing all the loops, so to speak, rather than opening cans of worms for the next person to have to interpret. So I haven't, I've gone to slightly fewer meetings. I haven't gone to CSO or bridge meetings this last, starting this fall. But, yeah, that's pretty much the numbers for, for September. The only, the only rec programs that we were charging for have been pickleball, but the revenue otherwise have come from facility rentals. It's been a really, I'll say definitely a challenging experience, this, this job in retrospect, but it's been one that I feel like I've grown a whole lot as a person and a professional. So I hope that I've been able to contribute some wins to this fund and, and give us something to feel proud of and continue, definitely here in support of the next rec director. We're interviewing for folks right now, and I hope we can find just really awesome fit and that I can provide them some good orientation materials to hit the ground running with. But I just want to share my appreciation for, for the leadership and, you know, guidance I've received along the way. And it's, I would say it's been a positive experience. So I just want to thank the leadership as well as the townsfolk, because, oh, man, I would do it for the kids all over again. Yeah, so just saying thank you. I think that's the end of my report, though.
Any questions for Bo? I have none. Thank you very much, Bo.
Thank you, Bo.
Move on to...
Mr. Chairman?
Mike?
Just want to, before Bo, this may not be the last meeting, but possibly. We're actively holding interviews this week for the Parks and Rec Director. We had one last week, but we got more coming up this week. So we were, the goal was to try to have someone on board before Bo departs. Not sure if that's actually going to happen, but we're, but we're involving Bo in the, in the interview process.
Okay. Thanks, Mike. Anything else on this? If not, we'll move on to the local hazardous mitigation plan for approval. Stephanie?
Sure. Thanks so much.
You're welcome.
I'm Stephanie Burke, planner with the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. And as you folks know, I've been working with local team members to update Castleton's local hazard mitigation plan. And I'm happy to say that we've reached the critical milestone of having pretty much no more yellow highlights or placeholders in the final draft of the plan that you have before you tonight. So you should have received two items, the review tool, as well as the final planning team-approved version of the local hazard mitigation plan update. It would have today's date in the header of each page, so you can keep track of your versions. But the review tool is now complete. When I was here at the midpoint in the plan development process back in May, I'd given you a version of this that had placeholders in it for page numbers. Now you have the page numbers completed, and this document pretty much serves as a crosswalk between what the federal requirements are for the plan contents and where you can find that information in your version of the plan. Okay? So this document is important to demonstrate you fulfilled all the federal requirements, and it will ultimately be used by Vermont Emergency Management to review your plan and determine whether they're willing to approve it. Okay? So the plan itself, when I was here in May, we had just finished with the hazard identification and risk assessment portion of the plan, where we pretty much locked down what the community, at least via the planning team, viewed as the highest-risk natural hazards. And to refresh your memory, those were... your memory, those were extreme cold, snow, and ice associated with severe winter storms, strong wind associated with both thunder and/or winter storms, and then floods that could be associated with a thunderstorm, a winter storm, or an ice jam. So following the public comment period at the midpoint in the development process for the plan, the planning team reconvened and we dove into pretty much the last half of the plan, which starts on page 18. So it really was taking the concerns and vulnerabilities and risks that had been identified in section five and developing a mitigation strategy to address those in section six. So section six kind of lays out the mitigation goal, what kind of capabilities the community has to undertake mitigation activities. We describe a bit about how the community complies with the National Flood Insurance Program, of which you are a member. And it also provides some information about your status as far as the state's incentives for flood mitigation are concerned through the Emergency Relief Assistance Program. I'd note that currently, your rating under the Emergency Relief Assistance Program is only seven and a half percent. But as soon as this plan is submitted for approval to the state, you're going to get the extra credit that you'll need to bump that all the way up to 17 and a half percent. So if there's a federally-declared disaster and there are damages in Castleton and you end up seeking FEMA public assistance, the state will contribute 17 and a half percent of the local match for, you know, eligible repair costs in a federally-declared disaster. So that, you know, that in and of itself is gonna, you know, is a significant financial benefit to the community by having completed this plan. So with an understanding of some core capabilities that the community has to undertake mitigation activities, the team looked at evaluating a broad range of mitigation actions in four different categories. They looked at local plan and regulatory tools, structure and infrastructure projects, natural system protection projects, and then outreach and education programming. So they undertook an evaluation that basically ranked a wide range of, of possible mitigation activities against five, six different criteria to come up with those that they felt were reasonable and practical for the community to, to implement. So those actions that make the cut are outlined in table six that starts on page 26. And there's a nice little mini-project profile for each of the recommended actions. So we've got actions that cover each of your highest-risk natural hazards, and we have actions in each of the four different categories of action types. So that pretty much wraps up on page 32. And then we conclude the mitigation strategy chapter with an explanation of how the community can integrate the concepts of this plan and this plan's goals into other plans and procedures. FEMA feels pretty strongly that in order for a community to really be successful in achieving long-term risk reduction, that these concepts are kind of permeate throughout your government operations. So we, we end the Hazard Mitigation Strategy Chapter with a discussion of how that's possible here. So the last chapter in the plan is really the Plan Maintenance, how the community will evaluate and monitor, monitor this plan once it's adopted on an annual basis, and then how you'll keep it updated on the minimum five-year lifecycle of the plan, because if you remember from last time, I mentioned that this is a five-year plan. So that, that pretty much will get you up to speed from where we picked up after I met with you all in May. I find that table two, starting on page four and going, going over onto page five, is a chronology of our plan development process. I think it's pretty impressive if you take a look at this, how much effort your local planning team has put into updating this plan on behalf of the community. You know, they kicked off work in January of this year and, you know, have met pretty consistently every month since then to get to the point where we are today. So the purpose of me presenting this on their behalf was to basically give you their approved version of the plan for review and comment and also kick off another two-week public comment period for key partners, the general public, folks who serve vulnerable populations in the region. You know, we've done a lot of outreach to provide public notice that this plan is now available in its final format for review and comment. And so we're looking to wrap up that comment period at your next regular meeting on October 23rd, where we hope you have an agenda item at the beginning for kind of a public information session for you all to discuss any final comments that you'd like to provide back to the planning team to consider before we get this on its next step. And also provide the public an opportunity, if they wanted to share their thoughts at a public meeting, they would do so at that October 23rd meeting. In addition to sharing comments in person at a meeting, they're, you know, everyone is encouraged, if they have thoughts, to send them by email to Mike, and those comments will be accepted up until the 23rd, at which point we will have one of two paths. We will have either, you know, kind of minimal or maybe editorial comments that don't change the substance of the plan, in which case we'd be looking for the select board at that point to authorize the plan be submitted for the first step in the approval process. Or at the end of the public comment period, you know, if we find that we get, you know, a, a large number or substantial comments that maybe change some of the thinking in the plan, those would be brought back to the planning team. They would have to think through how to address them in the plan, and then we'd probably circle back again like this to, you know, give you a revised plan that incorporated any final input from the public.
Okay. Questions for Stephanie? Board have any questions? Joe?
Stephanie, just, are you interested in minor editorial suggestions at this point?
I'm not gonna like take them like a scribe right now in your meeting. I would suggest if you have them, you can just do a quick bulleted point email to Mike, or you could do a scan of marked-up pages and, and send them along to Mike, and he'd make sure that they get my way.
Sure. I mean, it's things like, you know, we, we no longer, Castleton University no longer exists, you know, stuff like that.
So I've noted that on the back of the cover page. I've got their new logo in there with a footnote that says Vermont State University's Castleton Campus, formerly known as Castleton University, and referenced as such in this plan. So...
I see. Okay.
You know, I tried to cover that without having to go back and, you know, since we kicked off in January, it was Castleton University in January.
I think there's just...
Yeah.
One reference on page 21.
Okay.
Unless I overlooked another. The other question that I had is that two of the areas for improvement indicate staffing increases to the highway department and then the creation of an economic development position. And I don't believe our board has endorsed those as part of our objectives.
Okay.
And so I guess the question that I have is, if this is, this is gonna be signed by the chair of the select board, should it include some, some, those two items that have not yet been discussed, much less agreed to?
So I think you're speaking to the section of the mitigation strategy chapter that looks at community capabilities, correct?
Well, I could, I can give you the citations if you want. One is on page 21, areas for improvement. It's in the middle of the column on the left there. And then the other is at the bottom of page 19.
Mm-hmm.
Create a paid staff, economic development, administrative position.
Yes. So you're looking at the community capabilities, categories of administrative and technical, as well as financial. So what's listed here is what the planning team members felt were the community's strengths in those areas, as well as potential areas for improvement. So by all means, this is the opportunity for the select board to take a look at what the planning team thought and make sure that you concur. Because if, if, for example, you don't, and that really doesn't align maybe with kind of plans, other plans of, of the select board, then you certainly would want to address that. Okay? And do so during this public comment period. And provide some really clear direction back to the planning team as to, you know, how to address this. Is it a simple just delete this? Or is it some other, you know, restructuring of the way this has been characterized?
Yeah. Excuse me. Mike, what's your last name, so we make sure you get it?
It's me, Jim.
Bo. Pardon?
It's me.
Hugh?
Yeah, your son is me.
Oh, Hugh. Oh, okay.
My last name is Jones.
I thought it was a gentleman here.
No, this is Eric.
No, no. My name's Eric Baller. I'm with the Department of Health in Rutland, so.
He's on the, he's on the planning team.
So, Mr. Mark, I would, I would highly encourage, you know, that's chapter six, where we picked up after the midpoint. So for sure, in this area, if there are things, and as well as, you know, any information throughout the whole plan, you get like a second bite at the apple in terms of the information that was presented previously.
Well, from my point of view, it, it shouldn't be an individual select board member's input that changes this document. I mean, I, in my opinion, I'd prefer to have the board tonight, if possible, decide whether those two staff position inclusions are things that we want to have in the plan.
There may be other areas. So you could take it in a piecemeal approach, or you could, you know, my, my expectation would be on the 23rd, you're assembling all the final comments on behalf of the select board to present back to the planning team. So either way is fine with me.
What's your preference, Joe? What's your preference?
Well, my preference would be for us, we, we have a majority, but just barely, to say whether that's something that the select board is comfortable signing off on. Would you care to make? I mean, since we haven't discussed it, much less decided about it, I, I would, I would not personally favor that. I think there, there, there may be another way to address that from the point of view of the, the team that has developed this. You can use the passive voice. It has been suggested that personnel position related to economic development might be beneficial to add to the town, but that, such a decision has nothing to do. I, I don't know. I, I've said what I think. What do you think?
I'm in supportive of your thoughts, Joe.
We've had the conversation about the possibility of an economic development director or that position already. And I think that we need to continue that conversation at some point. Recall, we talking about that, Mike? We're gonna look into the feasibility of that?
Yeah, yes. And this is, this is, we're still going into the public comments period. So the board making a decision tonight, if you don't, if you want to make it with all five members here, at least as many, you still got till the 23rd to get your thoughts together and present something back on the 23rd.
Yes.
Okay, that makes sense.
So I, while you're, while you're contemplating of the contents in this plan, I want to make sure I draw your attention to the very first page, the purpose. Once adopted, this plan is not legally binding. Okay? This is a planning tool. You know, this isn't a contract or any kind of binding agreement between the town and FEMA or the town and its residents. This is really strictly a planning tool. And the areas for improvement in, you know, in some cases may indirectly get addressed through some of the mitigation actions that ultimately got recommended for implementation, but you're not going to find a mitigation action in table six that says, you know, create a paid staff, a paid staff economic development administrative position. So these capabilities are something that are described in this plan to make sure that we don't set you up for failure, that we set you up for success, that you have the, the core capabilities in terms of the strengths that are highlighted here to be able to accomplish what you, what you set out to try to do outlined in table six.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else for Stephanie?
Just, Joe? One other...
I'm sorry, go ahead, Joe.
Sorry, I'm prolonging the agenda here, but it's, it's a little more self-evident to me how increasing the highway department staff might improve the town's capacity to, to address hazard mitigation work. Less obvious how the creation of an economic development position would contribute to that.
So I would encourage that the question be posed back to the planning team. Could you please explain how this is relevant?
Okay. Anything else from the board? Jim Thomas?
On a brighter note, this evening, 6 o'clock news, Green Mountain Power has brought forth a plan to bury all the electrical lines in the state by 2030. So there go a lot of the power outages. They're saying no power outages after the 30, after 2030.
Is that a realistic plan?
If they bury the lines, all that tree stuff goes away and our, our...
No, I meant realistic for them to do it.
I think it is. I think they're obviously not, they're doing it on our dollar and some grants.
Okay. What's, what's the breakdown, you know?
I, I don't, I don't want to give you the numbers. By memory, it was 6 o'clock news and I didn't, I didn't take notes.
Anything else on this topic? If not, thank you very much. Yes, yes, Stephanie.
Is the board clear on the approval process, like the next steps here?
Yeah.
So we're gonna get approval pending adoption?
When?
So it'll be a preliminary round of comments from the state back on this, which may require some additional edits to this in order to get the approval pending adoption. Then once we clear that hurdle, it'll be back in its locked-down format for y'all to adopt, and then it gets sent to FEMA for their, for FEMA final adoption.
Are you talking about tonight?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay.
Just making sure that you're clear, that you're not, like on the October 23rd, there is an adoption certificate in the back here. You're not adopting the plan yet. You're just getting it authorized to submit for approval pending adoption.
Okay. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Have a good rest of your night.
Thank you, Stephanie. Anything else on this? If not, move on to on-road diesel, Canadian blend bit award. Is there a motion?
Uh, excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Spaulding, are you on Zoom?
Yeah, I hear you.
All right. Thank you.
What's the, what's the town manager's recommendation?
Yes, Mike, what's your recommendation?
I don't have one at this point. I didn't do enough research on this. I let the highway foreman do the research.
Well, is someone going to, is someone gonna make a recommendation?
What's RAF right now, Bob?
Um, I don't have that available right now to me.
Is the timing of a decision tonight critical?
Since it's not blended fuel in October, then, and in November, it's not critical.
Okay.
I mean, but the, the only issue is if they put on their, a, a time period on their... their, a time period on their bids, then that could affect it.
Do you want to carry this over, gentlemen?
I, I guess my question is, is there any realistic likelihood that we would get additional bids if we deferred this?
Not likely.
In which case, I'm prepared to move that we recommend we authorize the town manager to contract with Sam's YouSave for fuels for the next six months, being a combination of not blended in the fall and blended through the part of the winter at a rate of 14 cents over RAC price.
Does anyone know what the RAC price is now?
I do not.
Bob, what's the retail price on diesel right now? On-road diesel?
If you're pulled up to the pump?
Yeah.
It's $4.29 a gallon. That's what I made today.
I'm prepared to second Bob's, or Joe Mark's. I'm going to second that motion, Mr. Chairman. In other words, Champlain Valley's price is 350? And Sam YouSave is what today? What was that number, Bob? Well, the retail price isn't necessarily 14 cents.
That's, 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 that's retail price at the, at the pump. You pull up to the pump to fill up the buses, was $4.29, anywhere from $4.29 to $4.59 a gallon.
And I don't know how it is for diesel, but in my experience, New Jersey gas prices are almost always lower than Vermont's.
Yeah, it's correct. I don't know what they're even charging for you to go back home.
All right, I'm going to withdraw my second. Let's see if we can find out what RAC price is.
Yes. I'll withdraw my motion.
Bring us back to the next meeting.
Pardon? Yeah, if we can find out what RAC price is, that would be of immense help. Yeah.
The RAC price will be at the, at a point in time, right?
I understand that, but at least then we know whether we're, whether it's worth taking the risk or not.
Yeah.
We better get a, a bid of apples for apples.
Well, we've asked, we asked them to do, bid two ways. One, give us the price of a RAC and a fixed price. And then some people do not want to give a price over RAC, or they don't want to give a fixed price. It's rare that we get both.
So we'll hold this over to the next meeting? Is that, is that agreeable?
It is.
It is. It is. I would, I would ask that either you or the DPW foreman find out what RAC price is and just provide that information. They don't have to do any more research than that.
I can do that, Nick.
All right, that would be wonderful, Bob. Because all we need is that number, and then it'll give us a clue which way to go. Because right now, we're, we don't have, we don't really know.
Absolutely.
We're just shooting in the dark here.
Yeah.
Thank you, Bob.
No problem.
And that, that information will come from Alan?
Yeah, yeah, I'll get all of them.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Highway department equipment, grader, snowplow excavator. Mike? Mike Jones?
I'm here, I'm here. I don't have a recommendation from them, Mr. Chairman. I'm kind of stick, I'm kind of sticking to my guns on this, that they need to defend what they presented. And I wasn't here last week to, to know what they, where he got all of his numbers from. And I don't, I, I don't feel comfortable telling you that go with a low bidder on this one, because I don't, one of the things I did discuss with him is that the blades that we, that we're purchasing, the ones that we purchase on the Dodge, and it's in here somewhere, I don't remember which bidder or vendor it was, have lasted going on a third year, where the other ones that we've been buying, they're, they're burning through two sets to three sets a year. So sometimes going with the more expensive one is better in the long run. But I think that they should explain that to you, and, because I, I am not able to at this point.
So we hope it won't snow.
Well, they got blades right now.
I know we do.
But there's, I asked to get, have everybody give a, their recommendation, and I don't see it in here. So I don't really feel comfortable speaking for them.
Will you try to get that information?
Yeah, I'll, I'm going to make sure that, that he's here actually to, to speak about it next time.
Okay, that would be a good thing.
Sure.
That would be my preferred scenario. Anything else on this one? Tax sale discussion. I assume this came from Christine?
That is correct.
Okay.
I received an email today from Christine that had several documents in it. I haven't had a chance to review them today, but there's a list of properties that meet the criteria for the tax sale. And that's what we're trying to bring before the select board to, to have you make a decision whether you want stuff to, to go up for tax sale based on that, that criteria.
But you're not in a position to tell us whether this is something we should approve or not?
Well, I, I, I'm in a position to say that as long as that Christine's done all the research, which I don't have any reason to believe she didn't, they all, the ones that meet the criteria, then it should go, they should go to tax sale to try to remedy the arrears. We have a list of the personnel that are in arrears, and it's, it's not just property, but it's sewer, sewer, sewer corrections as well.
Well, our policy is pretty clear, as I recall, as we had lengthy discussion on this several years ago. I believe Mr., yes, Mr. Bruno was still the chairman at the time. So is this just a question of do we want you to, you need the authorization to proceed with this? Is that basically what we're doing?
Yes.
Because in my opinion, if anything meets the criteria, which is clear, and the property owners have been notified of that, then there's no reason not to proceed, in my opinion. Is there a motion?
Just, just so Mr. Chairman, so you're aware that we reached out to an attorney.
Pardon?
We reached out to an attorney for this because this will cost us, and we get the, we collect it back, but we're going to have to have that initial out-of-pocket cost to have the attorney do the research on these properties.
Which we do every year.
Yeah, it's standard procedure.
Okay. So I'll make a motion that we authorize the town manager to proceed with the normal progression of the annual tax sale. Is there a second?
I would second that.
Is there a discussion? Seeing none, I'll have.
I have a question.
Shut, wait. Go ahead, Bob.
Well, I just, I don't know if anybody on the board can answer this, but there's a couple accounts on here that it looks like nothing has been done to them. One is like four years old, and the other one's like six years old. Why haven't we pursued these past few years?
Mike?
Without knowing exactly which one, but there's some, some folks have been on and off with their, the payment plans. So they signed up for a payment plan, they pay for a while, then it stops, and they're back on. So it's almost a little game, that cat and mouse game, but typically, that's what happens if there's somebody on there for a long period of time. It was either, someone were on there because we couldn't find the actual persons that owned, try to get the mail to someone to warm up a tax sale. But I think we've got those resolved now. And so it's, a lot of it's the, we're on a payment plan, paid for a while, didn't pay, went back on it, didn't pay. So that's most likely the, the reason why, Bob.
Anything else on this?
Okay, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to bring anybody's name, but there's one on here that obviously hasn't paid anything in the last six years. The totals over to the right are the same every single year. So they've paid nothing for the last six years. But that's okay. We'll cover that down the road.
Anything else? If not, all those in favor of adopting the motion and second it as presented, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Bob, what'd you say?
I said aye.
Okay. Moving on to 2024 transportation alternative grant. Mike?
Board, this is the, this is hybrid now, but it includes the stormwater mitigation and the scoping study that was done for the village. If I haven't shared that with you, I, I got it on Friday from Hillary, and you guys got it, yep. This grant could be used to apply for stormwater mitigation in the village, which is our largest or the most problematic in the, in the town.
I'm sorry, we're chuckling. We keep turning, and he keeps bumping me, and I can't move any further that way.
You guys pay tickets?
We're not laughing at you, we're not laughing at you, Mike.
We've got these big cushy chairs here, that they take a lot of room.
So, so this is an opportunity, I guess, really to apply for the stormwater mitigation for the village. That's, that's the only place we really did a scoping study that's, would lead us to enough information or evidence to try to convince someone to give us that grant.
And the application is due by December 8th? Did I read that correctly?
Correct.
So what do you need from us?
Just a motion to apply, because obviously with all the grants, those, those tap grants, there's a town's matching share to stuff.
Is there a motion? So moved. Is there a second?
Well, maybe we should put a little detail on that motion for Allison's sake.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the town manager to proceed with applying for the VTранs Fall 2023 Transportation Alternatives and Municipal Highway and Stormwater Mitigation Program Grant.
Second.
Add a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
We hear you, Bob.
Okay, yep.
Who's that?
It's Bob.
Allison?
No, it was Bob.
Bob's on the phone somewhere.
Hello?
We got you, Bob.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to the manager's report.
It's a brief one, you don't have it.
Yes, okay, Mike.
Yeah, I figured that.
Please give us the bullets, Mike. Yeah.
There's, folks, my head is not in it right now. Sorry, as far as like digging in my brain. We're still, we're working on highway stuff. I mean, I think you heard complaints last meeting, you heard some this meeting about the roads, the condition of the gravel roads. We're working on them, we're out there grading. But this is, this is a larger problem than talking about it one sitting. It's a combination of strategy, budgets, all that good stuff. So I'll have to come back to you with, with a recommendation. I mean, I've heard the complaint, so.
Mr. Chairman? I, I'm intrigued by what Steve shared tonight. I mean, I drive that road several times every month, delivering Meals on Wheels up there, and I can attest, it does get pretty bad at times. And the concept that he described seems logical. It would be interesting to know if we have Vermont towns that use that approach, because I'd be willing to try it if we get positive reports back from other communities that are using it.
It's a great point. Just so the boards are aware, we, when I say we, I mean Brett Clark, when he was the highway foreman. We pursued this, because I learned about it during a training class I went to called chip sealing. And it seemed like a pretty good option to normal, just regular paving. But when we started looking around here locally to try to get input on, did people like it? Did it work well? Communities aren't using it. And Pike, Pike at the time, this was, we're going back close to a year ago, was the only one necessarily that was using it. And I talked, I talked to him this year about cost and stuff like that. And it's not, it's not as expensive as paving. It doesn't last as long as paving, but in some instances, it's a pretty good application to try. And we were going to, Brett and I were talking about trying it and bringing it to the board for, for approval, and it just fizzled out.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mike.
Pretty much, I mean, the, you're going to be, I guess, a safety, the public safety committee, the fire department's looking to meet with the public safety committee to talk about discussions on moving forward with the purchase of a vehicle. The highway department's still working on their long range or their vehicle replacement plan under capital improvement stuff, so they're not ready to talk to you about that. But the public, the fire department does want to meet with the public safety committee as soon as you guys are available, you and Dick and Jim are available. So, and moral, God willing, I will submit the union proposal. I need to talk to, to Dick and Jim before I do that, but to get that sent out to them so we can exchange proposals.
We haven't received anything from them yet?
No, they're waiting for me to.
They're waiting for us, huh?
Yeah, they're just waiting for me to get that.
Who's going to be first, huh?
Yeah.
Okay.
Other than that, it's, it's business as usual.
Okay, any other questions for Mike?
I have one, yeah.
Sure, sure, Bob, go ahead.
Where are we at with the roll-off transfer truck? Transportation truck, Mike?
As of Friday of last week, we, there's like, you ever seen that movie, The Money Pit? Two weeks, two weeks, that's what we've been getting from them. But as of Friday, it's been in the shop working on it, the, the word I got through the mechanic, our mechanic, was that they found a couple more things that they needed to address on it. Little things that were nothing, nothing showstoppers, but, and then we're supposed to get it back this week.
Okay.
Anything else for Mike? If not, we move on to purchase orders? I don't seem to have any here. I don't have any purchase orders. Anyone have any purchase orders?
I do not.
No? Okay, we'll move on to warrants for approval. Is there a motion? Make a motion, we approve warrant number 1009A for $195,080.31. Warrant 1009R for $650.01. Warrant 0919 for $1,824,537.19. Warrant 0928 for $6,790.25. Warrant 1005 for $20,705.73. Warrant 1009 for $187,422.61. Warrant 0928P for $18,159.25. And warrant 1005P for $16,549.09.
Second.
A second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Joe?
I would move that we approve warrant number 0929P for $641.32. And warrant number 1006P for $641.32.
Bob, would you like to second that?
I will second that.
Okay, any discussion? I will recuse myself. Okay, Dick recuses himself. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion passes. So Bob will have to come in and sign those two warrants when he gets a chance. Bob, the two warrants I can't sign, if you could come in the office sometime and sign those, it would be wonderful. Just to make.
They will, I'm back.
When are you going to be back, Bob?
I'll be back next month. I'll be back next Monday.
Whoops. Too late, isn't it?
No, that'll be fine, as long as it's, keep the auditors happy.
Okay.
Auditors have to have a signature on the document.
Please enter my box, I'll come in late Monday night and do it.
Where are you in New Jersey, Bob?
It's Rockford.
Oh, lovely.
I know where that is. It's in the nice section of town, right, Bob?
The Giants are losing.
I don't know.
Or underwater.
Are you at the stadium?
No, I'm at the Hilton Hotel, about 100 yards away from the stadium.
What's the count?
You need 10. How many you got?
And I did it with that, one of those little rubber things that Melanie, I'm sure, used to use.
Okay. Select Board comments and/or concerns. Joe?
Well, it, this is really not me as a Select Board member speaking, but I have to say that I know many, many people, especially people who live near the college or in the village, who are quite rattled by this recent murder and the fact that it is as yet quite unsolved. There's nothing we can do about that, but those of you who live a little bit farther away should know that it's having that consequence on the community. Other than that, I'm hoping that we will have an executive session on real estate.
Okay, Dick?
I'm just going to reiterate what Joe Mark said, in as much as it's not just people in the village that are a little bit apprehensive at this point in time. It's been conveyed to me by people out where I live, something there, a little bit concerned, for lack of a better word.
Anything else?
That's all I got.
Bob, do you have anything?
I just wanted to ask, I don't know if I should ask Mike or who can answer this question. I see that the DRV's got a meeting next Tuesday night, and the subject of town plowing private roads come up. So I just want to know how that all materialized. I mean, I know they've been plowing Sheldon Road, the town has been for 30-plus years, because I live across the street, and I watch them every single year. So why all of a sudden that comes to light? I mean, did somebody, a citizen write that to the DRV board, or, I just kind of want to know what's going on.
Can you answer that, Mike?
I can't. I'm waiting for that. That's off, too, I don't know why it's doing that. I can't answer that. It started with a letter that the town received from the attorney for the seller, and there was some stuff in there that seemed, that we needed clarification on. So the zoning administrator and consultant, Jim Thomas, we're going back and forth with the seller's attorney, and at the end of those conversations, it was still unclear, and at that point, it was a decision to, I asked them to get ahold of our attorney, Merrill Bent, and Merrill, in that, I wasn't part of the conversation that happened, I was just, I was told what happened afterwards, was that under no circumstances should the town be plowing private roads. And in this case, for Sheldon Road, they were talking about the section that goes beyond the town, where the town currently maintains, the small section that becomes private as part of this subdivision. So that's where it transpired, Bob.
Anything else?
Oh.
Yes, Bob? Go ahead, Bob.
Well, I'm just, I think that's sufficient for now.
Okay. I have one comment. I'd like to ask the board members, say, within the next two weeks, to please submit their suggestions for the use of the remaining ARPA funds. You can get them to Mike, and we can put them together. Or he can. That's all I have.
Can, can we ask about, Jim?
Pardon?
Can Mike give us a list of what's been proposed, what's been asked for, what the town spots are on spending the ARPA money? Reiterate, and I think he's already done that once or twice or three times for this one.
Yep.
True.
I can do that.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else?
Well, just to follow up on Bob's, Mike, are you aware of any ARPA fund requests that have not made it onto your spreadsheet that you provided us about a month ago?
I think the only thing that was on there that I can recall was the money that was suggested for the village school.
Okay, thank you. So the list that you provided us a month ago is comprehensive at this point?
I have to look at it to be, to say 100%, but I'm not sure if the sewer extensions are on there. I have to look at it.
Okay. Anything else? If not, brief recap, items for follow-up, do we have anything there?
I have nothing.
Nothing?
Just, this is not pressing, but sitting under the marble plaque here reminds me that we received a request from one of our citizens to have that returned to the property that he now owns. Personally, I would like to make a decision about that only after we had researched as best as possible why we have that and who gave it to us and under what circumstances. And I know that the issue of noise on Pine Street has been a persistent topic at these meetings, and I know that now more than ever, the chief is quite busy, but it would be, I guess I would like to request that he provide us with a draft revision of the noise policy within the next two meetings.
In response to your question regarding the marble plaque, there was some research done on that, and when, the information we received is that when the school closed, Martha Towers was instrumental in having that plaque donated to the town. And that's why it's here.
Mm-hmm.
Want my opinion?
Sure.
As far as I'm concerned, it stays here. It was donated to the town.
Well, I think it's a better way of honoring these veterans.
I do, too. I do, too, yeah.
I agree. And, yeah.
Any other comments?
I think putting it inside a private home is.
Not a good idea.
Approximately, when was it donated to the town?
I don't know.
I do know, for all the years.
It was back prior to 1977, is the, was the information we received.
I can tell you that when I moved into town, decades ago, it was hanging in the town office then.
Exactly, yeah, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, the historian that gave us the information was the one that sat underneath it.
I mean, okay.
That's correct.
Pretty credible source.
Yes.
That's correct.
Story is a little more elaborate than what.
Thanks, thanks, Mike.
I guess I would request, then, that we put this on a future agenda and make a decision and inform the property owner of our position.
Okay, sounds good. Anything else? Mike, do you need an executive session? Joe said one for real estate. Do you need anything?
No, if anything, it would be real estate, yeah.
Okay. So is there a motion regarding an executive session?
There is a motion. I'll make a motion to go into executive session for real estate with the board and the town manager at 8:30.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.